Okay, I'll welcome everybody to the August Watertown School Board meeting, and I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, under the consent agenda, first of all, item 2.1, roll call. Please note that all board members are present. Item 2.2, are there any conflicts of interest board members need to disclose this evening? All right, 2.3, review and approval of the agenda.
I move approval, review and approval of the agenda.
Motion by Stein.
Second.
Second by Lor. Any comments or questions on the agenda?
Yes, we do need to add an executive session personnel.
Okay, so we need a motion to a... amend the agenda? Motion. To include executive section at the end. Okay, motion by Molton to add an executive session. Second by Iverson. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, hearing none, we vote on the amendment first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda now amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to approve the minutes of the July 11th and July 12th meetings. Do we have a motion, please? Motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Iverson, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 2.5, we'll receive the financial reports for July of 2022.
Thank you. In the general capital outlay and special education funds, we received the typical July property taxes in the first monthly state aid payment in the estimated amount of $1,163,412 in the general fund and $191,000 in the special education fund. These amounts will be adjusted once the 22-23 enrollment is verified with the state. In the general fund, this fund's ending cash position reflects a decrease when compared to the prior year as anticipated. Please note that the district did not transfer from capital outlay in FY22 due to federal support payments which have assisted in offsetting regular general ed expenditures. The capital outlay ending cash position is relatively consistent with that of the prior year when the remaining certificate allocation for the remodel of the high school is retained from the balance. Special education's ending cash position reflects improvement over the prior years. K-12 enterprise funds had moderate activity in the funds of K-12 nutrition and concessions, driver's ed, preschool, and custodial funds. Lake Area Tech received several different revenue sources, including a federal payment in the amount of $248,000 for Perkins Title II. Expenditures exceeded revenue for the month with the cash position of this fund decreasing. The decrease in cash position is expected as LATC expenses construction in progress each month. The diesel and archway construction expenses totaled $699,000 for the month of July. Revenue is expected from the state to cover House Bill 1031 contributions toward the archway, and payments from the foundation will be expected in future months to cover naming right contributions. Financial aid for LATC had moderate activity with activity to pick up in August and support of federal payments for students. LATC enterprise funds had moderate activity in the bookstore, food service, and educare. All funds continue to operate at a reasonable cash flow for their corresponding funds. A special note is that educare received $55,900 through the Department of Social Services as supported under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act for the purpose of providing childcare program stabilization funding. Please note that this is the second round of funding received under this grant. Funds have been used to offset regular daycare expenditures and recently to assist through the building move to Garfield location. The ending cash position of this fund continues to increase. In the employee benefit trust operation, the premiums were significantly exceeded by the claims and administrative costs during the month. This is typical as the district's 10-month employees do not contribute to the plan during the month of July and August. The ending cash position reflects an expected decrease with a premium free month held in school year 2022. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Okay, if we have no questions on the financial report, we'll move on to the discussion items for Lake Area. And first of all, 3.1, is there any public input this evening on agenda or non-agenda items for Lake Area? Okay, if not, we'll hear about the Lake Area Fall Startup Plan.
Yes, ma'am, just a quick recap on, for Lake Area Tech, a slide, please. Just looking over the last year, we had, for FY22, we had over 2,600 students in our unduplicated headcount, that's the total for the year. And we also had over 720 diplomas and degrees awarded. That makes us the third highest degree granting entity in the state behind just SDSU and USD. Currently, this year, we ended the year with 1,997 full-time equivalents. That's up from 1,962 full-time equivalents last year, so a gain of 35 full-time, the equivalent of 35 full-time students in growth for the school. Our placement remained high, 99.1%, and our average salary jumped almost $2 per hour with that to $23.16 an hour. That's for the class of 2021 graduates. And 85%, over 85% of those stayed in South Dakota and employed in their field, so. And of course, we began the diesel expansion last year, and we secured funding for the archway complex. Next slide, please. This year, we're starting, enrollment is again up. We're looking at, right now, we have 2,311 students signed up versus 2,196 this time last year. That's following the 2% increase in FTE last year, so that's really good news. About the same number of dual-status students, I think there's nine different right now. And so the growth is in four-credit students taking college full-time. And in fact, we have a significant increase in full-time students, far more than we have increase in part-time students, so that's really good news. We do have a large sophomore class, that's the reason. So we'll have a little bit smaller freshman class, but a large second-year class. And then we'll see, because of that, we see a slight decrease in the number of first-time students, in other words, students that haven't been to college anywhere else. Lake Area Tech is their first, their first college experience, and so a slight decrease there from last year. Overall, we have about 40% of those so far that have applied for federal financial aid are Pell Grant eligible, meaning they're low-income students. And that's fairly typical for us, and we will see, typically, we'll see that number increase as we enter into the school year because typically, the low-income students apply for federal financial aid just slightly later than others. And we have a record number of Build Dakota scholarships this year with 142 students that will be coming, entering this year with a full-ride scholarship. Next, and just to balance where we're at nationally, we have, you can see our growth here, that's countered by the, nationally, over 20% decrease in community college enrollment since the beginning of the pandemic. So Lake Area Tech and South Dakota as a whole is really atypical as far as enrollment in college. Next slide, please. We do ask people to be patient this year with our, with our construction. We have a number of projects going on, the archway construction. That has closed Arrow as of today, and that will remain closed for a while. Officially, it's closed through December. We anticipate it maybe longer than that. And that's closed for safety reasons as they build that archway. And then, of course, that will impact how the high school students transit from the high school over to our buildings. And so we'll be putting out a lot of information to make sure people know where they're going and helping our instructors also understand that the high school students may need a little bit of additional time the first few days as they figure out which paths work best for getting them to their classrooms. We're also burying the telephone lines and power lines that were on the poles right outside, right across there. So that will also impact as we go through, and then we are, though, building parking lots. And we hope to, if we get all the parking lots done in time, we'll have more parking slots than we did starting last fall. The difference will be there will be more on the perimeter. So even though construction is eating up some of the parking places, we'll actually have more parking places, just people will have to walk slightly more, slightly longer distance, so. And we're really working hard on where exactly we're going to put visitor parking for the front entrance because that's where the predominance of the construction is going to be. So we've got a couple of different schemes, and that will change over the year for the visitors because at one point in time, the parking lot right, right south of the main entrance will be consumed by construction. But when it's not, then that will be our visitor parking, so. Certainly, next, I believe that's the last slide, so if there's any questions, we'd be certainly happy to entertain those. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the action items for Lake Area. First of all, personnel and 4.1.1, the resignations.
Yes, ma'am, we'd recommend your concurrence with the resignations as presented.
Move approval of the resignations?
Motion by Stein.
Second.
By Lor, to approve the resignations. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4.1.2, authority to modify positions.
Yes, ma'am, Lake Area Tech requests the authority to modify both technology, diesel instructor positions from 190-day contracts to 220-day contracts. Brand Holdings, also known as Kibble, will cover the additional salaries and benefits on an ongoing basis. Corporate education will coordinate, orchestrate, and populate the summer training sessions. It's estimated this will cost about $15,000 per instructor per year. Final costs, of course, will be based upon the experience and credentials of the individual instructors. So we request your approval of this, of the position modifications.
Could we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract recommendations.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Lor and a second by Stein to approve the authority to modify these positions as presented. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 4.1.3, the contract recommendations and addendum.
Yes, ma'am, the contract recommendations and addendums are fairly typical for this time of year. The one exception is the, we will be modifying Mark Cliers' contract. He's one of those technology diesel instructors. The other technology diesel instructor position is open, and so that will be, that position will be, that modification for the contract portion of it will take place when we hire that individual. The, but other, the rest of the recommendations are fairly typical for this time of year. We recommend your approval of the contract recommendations and addendums.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
Move approval of the contract recommendations and addendums as presented.
Motion by Stein.
Second.
Second by Lor, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4.1.4, the stipend requests.
Yes, ma'am, Lake Area Tech supports our instructors pursuing higher degrees, particularly when they support their current positions. So you have in front of you four requests for such support as they seek higher credentials and higher degrees. I'm going to request your support of those requested stipends.
Could we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the stipends.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Stein, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 4.1.5, the authority to hire.
Yes, ma'am, Lake Area Tech requests the authority to hire an additional precision machining instructor due to enrollment growth. With over 25 incoming students, the first-year class will need to be split into two shifts due to the facility and equipment capacity as well as for shop safety. This would be 190-day faculty contract with the salary based upon the state post-secondary technical instructor salary formula. We anticipate that range to be between $47,000 and $71,000, depending upon the instructors, the industry experience, teaching experience, and education of the candidates. We request your authority, your approval of this authority to hire.
Okay, motion, please.
Move, move approval of the authority to hire, please.
Motion by Stein.
Second.
Second by Lor, comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we'll move to the property items and 4.2.1, consider the sale of the high-performance engine machining equipment.
Yes, ma'am, typically, we'd be recommending that you take the low bid, but in this case, since this is a sale of items, Lake Area Tech recommends accepting the high bid for the high-performance engine machining equipment from Jameson Equipment for a total of $102,000. Jameson Equipment is willing to purchase all the equipment where, and the bid meets all specifications. We recommend your acceptance of the high bid.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move that we accept the high bid from Jameson Equipment as presented.
Motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Iverson, any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, under 4.2.2, we're considering bid awards. First of all, for A, the parking lot construction.
Yes, ma'am, Lake Area Tech recommends accepting the sole bid from Dunick Incorporated for the parking lot construction for a total of $437,554.75. Funds are budgeted in our building's program improvements line item and the budget, and the bid meets all specifications. The bid did come in slightly higher than the estimate, but well within the 10%. And so it is deemed reasonable, and no, no bids were received on alternate A, which was to have a concrete parking lot. We recommend your acceptance of the sole bid.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move that we accept this bid on this parking lot.
Motion by Iverson. Second by Molton, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is B, the dental operatory, operatory chairs.
Yes, ma'am, we received no bids on the operatory chairs. Therefore, Lake Area Tech requests that Watertown School Board authorize the college to directly purchase up to 12 dental assisting operatory chairs, not to exceed $120,000. This equipment is budgeted in our FY23 Perkins grant.
All right, a motion, please.
I move that we authorize LATC to directly purchase 12 chairs as presented.
Motion by Molton. Second by Iverson, any comments? If not, all in favor of approving the purchase of dental chairs, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the precision machining lathe.
Yes, ma'am, Lake Area Tech requests your acceptance of the sole bid purchase of, for a precision machining lathe from Productivity Incorporated for a total of $91,756. The equipment is budgeted in the FY23 Perkins grant, and the bid does meet all specifications.
Okay, motion, please.
Lay bid.
Motion by Iverson. Second by Molton, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And part D, looking at the bid awards for the precision machining equipment.
Yes, ma'am, Lake Area Tech and College recommends accepting the sole bid from Productivity Incorporated to purchase the following: a lathe at $21,442,000, two mini-mills at $35,260, and one surface grinding machine at $34,260,000. The funds for this sale, the funds are available through the sale that you approved earlier of the high-performance engineering equipment as well as our FY23 Perkins grant, and this bid did meet all of our specifications.
Okay, motion, please.
I move acceptance of the sole bid from Productivity for the equipment as presented.
Motion by Molton. Second by Iverson, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4.2.3, consider equipment and vehicle leases.
Yes, ma'am, Lake Area Tech recommends approval of the no-cost lease for, I'm sorry, for the lease for fall of 2022 semester. The South Dakota Highway Patrol is again providing two cruisers for the law enforcement program at no-cost, at no-cost leases. The heavy equipment operator program is leasing an asphalt roller, wheel loaders, compact wheel loader, and an excavator from Transource as well as a dozer from Interstate Power Systems. You have the details of those leases in the package. Additional equipment will be leased in the income, in the coming up months to support the heavy equipment operator program and the projects they have for this fall.
Okay, motion, please.
I move that we accept these equipment and vehicle leases.
Motion by Iverson. And second by Molton, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4.2.4, consider the SDSU facilities agreement for FFA and FCC LA.
Yes, ma'am, Lake Area Tech requests approval to enter into a facilities agreement with South Dakota State University for the, the FFA and FCC LA office spaces. The, the full expense of rent, internet, phone, and indirect administrative oversight is funded through the State Department of Education's grant agreement, and the, the total for, for both organizations is $11,226.85. We recommend your approval of this lease.
Could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the facilities agreement for FFA and FCC LA. I assume these are agriculture.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Motion by Molton. Second by Iverson, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 4.2.5, consider the terminal lease agreement.
Yes, ma'am, pending final approval of the city of Watertown, Lake Area Tech requests approval to enter into the lease of the existing airport terminal with the city of Watertown. The lease would be for the 7, 7,391 square feet of space in the old terminal building, the parking lot, and the lawn area immediately adjacent, adjacent to and north-northeast of the old terminal building, as well as 63,000 square feet of ramp space immediately adjacent to the south-southwest of the old terminal building. The lease would be for $4 per square foot or $29,564 a year, and then 17 cents a square foot for the, for the land, which would be a total of $10,710 annually. And Lake Area Tech will be responsible for the utilities and maintenance of the building, grounds, and, and the grounds with the exception of the ramp space which is maintained by the city. LAT intends to demo and replace the building either at or before the end of the five-year lease.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move that we agree to consider this terminal lease agreement.
Motion by Iverson. And a second by Molton to approve the terminal lease agreement. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, President Courtney.
Thank you, ma'am, and as we head into another year, I want to just thank you in advance for all your support because it really makes a difference to our students and our staff to have support of the school board, so thank you.
All right, now we'll move to the discussion items for 14-4, the K-12 side. And first of all, 5.1, is there any public input this evening on agenda or non-agenda items for the K-12 side? All right, moving on, 5.2, the Northeast Tech High School report.
Thank you. Just a reminder to those board members who are on the Northeast Tech Board, there's a meeting on Wednesday, August 17th at 5:45. The superintendents will kind of have their pre-school meeting on Thursday, August 11th. So we, if there's anything to update the board on following those two meetings, we sure will.
All right, next is 5.3, and our return to school plans.
Yes, throughout the, the COVID situation, through our, to, in order to comply with our federal funding requests, we need to update and provide a return to school plan. Our return to school plan for '22-23, very similar to last school year. The only concession, so visitors allowed, it will, it will run like what most folks consider to be a normal school year with visitors in, speakers can come in, that kind of stuff. Face masks would be optional for employees and students, with the exception of, we are recommending still with a COVID positive, a five-day period out, followed by five days of masking for return. And so with a positive test, we will be keeping track of that with the counter still on the website. But that is our only, what I would call mitigation going, going forward for this school year. The, the plans are somewhat stackable so that in the instance of a real uptick in the COVID, we would actually revert to the 2020-21 plan, which was a little heavier in mitigation. So two school years ago, if for some reason there would be an uptick in cases or the need for more mitigation, so the presentation here, I would take questions here, and then you'll note an agenda item under action items where we would be asking for approval of that particular plan.
Okay, thanks. 5.4, we'll move on to the first reading of policies, and we've got the policy JJIC-A.
Yes, we approved an update to our participation policy last month. That is in effect with activities that are starting this fall. We had some that started already last week and another batch that are going this week. So the new activities policy is in effect. This was in policy, a letter that was sent, and then the approval, so the acknowledgement of parents. What we are recommending is just deletion of this as a board policy and direct the Activities Office that they would refer all correspondence to the updated, updated training rules policy. So this is just the first reading. If there are comments, suggestions, anything to go with that, we would take that, but we would bring it back then as a second reading for approval of the deletion of that as a policy.
Okay, any comments on that? So we're just eliminating a redundancy?
Correct.
All right, if there's no other comments on that, we'll move to the action items. And 6.1, the approval of the bills.
I move approval of the bills.
Motion by Stein. Second by Lor, any comments, questions on any of the bills? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move to the personnel items and 6.2.1, the resignations.
Thank you, you can see the resignations presented there, and we recommend do approve those resignations as listed.
Okay, could we have a motion?
Move approval of the resignations as presented.
Motion by Stein. Second by Lor, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6.2.2, the contract recommendations and addendum.
Again, with these recommendations, we recommend that we do approve the addendums and contracts as presented.
Okay, motion, please.
Move approval of the contract recommendations and addendums as presented.
Motion by Stein. Second, second by Lor, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And 6.2.3, the stipend requests.
These are the stipend requests for this upcoming school semester of our staff that are pursuing a higher degree, and again, recommend approval of these requests for stipend.
Okay, motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the stipends.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
And second by Stein, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Opposed. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the property items, six point three point one, consider the nutrition services equipment bids.
Thank you. It is recommended to approve the bid received from Hubert Company LLC for the equipment purchases of a combi oven in the amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars, and a convection steamer in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um, these purchases will be accommodated by nutrition service funds and have been budgeted for, um, out of the FY twenty-three equipment purchase budget.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the bid from Hubert Company for the equipment as presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Six point three point two, consider engagement for the fiscal year twenty-two on the audit services.
Yes, it is recommended to engage I D Bailey as the district's auditors for period ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, they will audit the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, discreetly presented component unit, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the district as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion, please.
I move that we, uh, enter into this agreement with, uh, I D Bailey.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, six point three point three, consider, uh, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two supplemental budget.
Thank you. Um, this is a supplemental budget dated back to twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, the district had funds held in trust to accommodate the two thousand and seventeen debt service payment for the middle school project. The funds held with the fiscal agent were used against the district debt in the amount of nine million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, and therefore, at the time of liquidation, it is required to book that as an expenditure on the financial statements. Um, per our auditor guidance, it is best practice to increase budget authority in the fund responsible for making the debt payment. Um, please note, this is a non-cash expenditure. It's just an internal financial, um, booking that we have to do, and therefore just need the budget, budgeting authority to increase that line item.
All right, motion, please.
I move approval of the supplemental budget as explained and presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions on that? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Six point three point four, reestablish the adult meal prices.
Yes, in order to remain in compliant, in compliance with the USDA program guidelines under the state's child nutrition program, it is required that the district increase its adult meal price for the twenty-two, twenty-three year to four eighty-five, rather than the previously approved amount of four oh five, and the adult breakfast price to two seventy from two forty. This increase is a federal mandate as USDA recently released the federal reimbursement rates, which increases the formula and requirement that drives the adult meal price.
Okay, motion, please.
I move that we accept this, uh, the, the adult meal prices as presented.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Um, six point four, approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three consolidated application. Oh.
I think we moved.
I'm sorry.
Park and rec.
Back up. Six point three point five, consider park and rec facility agreement.
Thank you. Yes, this is the facility agreement, which outlines the rental to accommodate the park and rec facilities at a total cost of twenty-three thousand dollars for school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, motion on this, please.
I move acceptance of the facility agreement with the park and rec.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions, comments there? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, now I can do six point four and the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three consolidated application.
Yes, this is our annual approval of the consolidated application. Um, this is our request for our federal title funds that we have to submit each year, and due to the length of the application, is not included in the packet, but a copy is available in the office. Um, so it's essentially us writing out the narrative of, and the budget part of how we intend to expend federal title funds.
Okay, motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, consolidation application.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Stein. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Six point five, we need to approve the return to school plans that Dr. Danielson presented earlier.
Yes, asking for your approval to the, uh, above-mentioned plans for our return to school for twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton to approve the return to school plans. Any questions on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Six point six, consider the twenty-twenty-two fall athletic fundraising request.
Yes, thank you for your consideration on the request to sell the Arrow pride cards, uh, this fall to help support our activities at W H S.
Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the fall athletic fundraising.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Stein. Questions?
Please stop by my house. I'd like to buy one. I like coupons.
Okay. Anything else?
Careful what you wish for, you might be buying a hundred and fifty of them.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, six point seven, our student enrollment requests, first of all, the six point seven point one, open enrollment requests.
We have one open enrollment there for your approval, recommending, uh, that approval.
Motion, please.
Move approval of the open enrollment requests.
Motion by Stein.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Six point seven point two, the thirteen, twenty-eight, ten.
Yes, same. We have one thirteen, twenty-eight, ten request recommended for approval.
Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the thirteen, twenty-eight, ten.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Stein. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And on to number seven, communications and seven point one administrative reports.
Yes, I've got a little bit of a list here for you. Um, one reminder, uh, for our, uh, the, uh, events we host at W H S for seniors sixty-five and over, you just need to show your driver's license to get in free to events. Um, so don't forget about that. There is no senior pass or golden pass anymore. Uh, we changed that a couple of years ago. Um, for the rest of the board and the public, Tammy Reiber, our board president, was a nominee for state, uh, South Dakota Board Member of the Year. Um, I'd like to call her the runner-up. Um, the winner was, uh, uh, the bor- uh, s- board member from Sioux Falls School District, Cynthia Mickelson, but congratulations to Tammy and thanks for her service, so, um, recognize that. Um, a, a note to the public on driver's ed. At one point in our discussion on driver's ed, um, when we talked about it in the spring, we had, uh, uh, more applicants than we had slots for the summer session. We were hoping that we could find a way to offer a fall session. Right now, we do not have the required staffing for that, um, so, uh, we're a little disappointed about that, and we're hopeful that we could make that work, but, uh, our apologies if there were some folks that, uh, were looking forward to that, but as of this time, would not be able to, um, offer fall driver's ed sessions. Um, then some switching, um, our eighteen to twenty-one program has moved from the Garfield over to the middle school to make way for the EduCare, uh, of Lake Area, so that had opened this summer. Our eighteen to twenty-one students will start at the middle school, and then, um, we, uh, have a, an alternative education program going into the P D C. So those looking for Arrow education can find them located in the office area at Garfield as well, so a couple new tenants at Garfield, one of them being Arrow Ed. And then, uh, note for parents, we have our pre-parent teacher conferences, um, on Tuesday, August twenty-third. That's for all grades K through twelve. That's from eleven AM till seven PM. Um, so look for notification from your child's school, and with the first day of school starting on Thursday, August twenty-fifth. So with some in-service days in between, and an invitation to join us out at the Country Road Barn to welcome our new staff in the K-12 side. That is on, um, Wednesday, August seventeenth at noon at the Country Road Barn just north of Watertown, so. And board members, if I haven't gotten from you your attendance, uh, please let me know, and I'll make sure we have you there, so. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, item seven point two, is there any board reports for the superintendent?
Uh, just, uh, two things real quick. Uh, first of all, we'd like to wish the staff, the district staff and Lake Area Tech staff, uh, successful school year. Thank you for all your hard work and effort that goes into it. Greatly appreciated. And then, uh, just secondly, on a follow-up from a item that I've brought up the last couple of board meetings regarding, uh, live streaming our board meetings, we do have a plan in place for that, and it tentatively looks like it's going to transition around January first-ish is when the switch may be, um, official, so.
Yeah, we'll have, have a little more of a public announcement on some things that we're looking at for our board meeting format, so.
And I do have a note. Um, we did send out a push notification this afternoon in terms of, um, the universal free meals for the school year that will no longer be, um, going into next school year, so we just made a note, we are here to assist families with the application process um, that uses family income to qualify students for free reduced-price or paid meals. Applications to be eligible for the benefit will be available, um, at the back-to-school open houses the week of school. However, if your family would like to pick one up, um, earlier, they may, they have been made available at your student's school and can be picked up Monday through Friday between the hours of eight AM and four PM.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, if not, we are going to our added agenda item, the executive session. We need a motion to enter executive session.
I move we move into executive session.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Stein, and there will be no action following this executive session. Thanks, everybody, for coming.